Doing it in a dimensionally correct fashion, making sure everything fit on the property. And then moving it, taking those amenities and shifting them around to make sure, to make them more usable, more user friendly, create a nice internal circulation plan. And just site things properly where it would be easily used. So what I'd like to do, and I'll also point out additionally, we had to add was select stormwater management items that are going to be recorded in the end. We added egress points in the south, in the middle, and in the north ends. Right now on the property, I believe there's five or six egress points which in the future will not be allowed by the road commission. So as we get further, further along, this will be, we'll be able to know where those points of egress are. And they will connect to parking and, and the larger parking areas and the more used areas. And then other parking areas at different sides of the site for, for better use. So I'll start with the north end of the property, which will probably be starting on the third page of your handout. At the north end, the far north end of the property is, there's a Sugar Shack building as well as a, like a 4H retail shop. So the whole north end of the property is going to be more of 4H area. Where we have, the 4H area will have its own parking and its own, its own main access. But that access will be connected with the southern, the center portion of the property. So that, you know, you can come in the north and if you need to go back down to the, to the middle of the property, the center of the property, you can easily get there and actually I can point that out. So up here is the 4H area, you've got the Sugar Shack, you've got the retail, and then it's got its own parking. But then there is access that will go down to the middle area of the property. I'll point that out to you guys so you guys can see that as well. So Sugar Shack, retail, and then this is all the 4H area. These are fields for livestock. You've got some areas in here for, actually over in here, for other, other livestock chickens, whatever the 4H group is, is raising at the time. And it gives parking up there for, you know, when families come in or when kids come in to do their 4H projects or for shows. They can come in, they can park, and they can, you know, maintain the animals as they do. And just, you know, work out, work on the farm, basically.
The community gardens.
Yeah, yeah, community garden, I was going to get to that. You've got a community garden down in this area here. I know there's been a community garden on the site for some years, I believe. That was in what is now going to be a parking area. So we shifted that north on the property, just slightly off the parking lot. So as you come in to the main parking area, it's easily accessible to anyone who's coming to work in the community garden. You don't have to go very far. And then north of that would be the, the livestock fields and that. Additionally, right opposite the community garden is the potential Ernst Dairy Barn. That, that is an option for the township to acquire. Originally that was sited down on the back, on the east side of the property. But originally for grading reasons, but we found that the grading, looking at the county two-foot contours, we found that that building may work just as well, if not better, up closer to the road, which would give it more exposure. So you can see that building, and I'm sorry, blocking everybody from, you see that building. Yep, no, it's actually the same.
It's sections of it.
You need to flip two pages further in. So I started on the third page and we kind of skipped pretty quickly down to the, like the fifth page. That's the one, yep. Yeah, 4H is up at the north end, it's way up at the north end. So the 4H is on the first one you were on. And now the Ernst Dairy Barn is, is more towards the central part of the site. So, so what you're, what you're looking at there is the exact same thing that's right here. Just it's not split up by pages yet, thanks, John. So we talked about the parking. We also have a, in this area, we have a, an orchard. So again, that orchard is adjacent to the parking area to give it, to give it more, make it easy to access. You know, people can come if they want to, if it's apples, picking apples in the orchard, they come right into the parking lot. And it's right off the parking lot, easily accessible, as well as being next to the barn, which would probably be storing equipment for, for that use.
Can I just say one thing?
Sure.
If you do the three pages, you got what he's got.
Yes.
See what I'm saying?
Yeah, we put pages in because we want to have a little more description.
It's pretty, pretty basic.
Yeah. So, um, so additionally, at the center, center portion of the, of the property, you see the larger parking lot. That is the potential sighting for a township hall. Size wise, we put a building on there, it was a best guess. At some point, if, if the township is going to be putting a building there, we would size that correctly for the township's needs. It would, you know, take some planning to, to get that, to get that right, and, and lots of discussions. As you can, and also, so right here, just to the south of that, is the, what we're calling the North House. Originally, we had designed some parking in here, but at the request of the township, we removed that parking. We don't believe it's necessary to have that there, but there is a gravel access pathway, or pedestrian pathway, to get to the event barn from that north parking lot. And in removing that parking, we added a, like a circular drive in front of the event barn. So that in the, when you do have events, let's say there's a wedding there, you can pull up the catering truck right to the front and then drive it right out. Or if you're dropping off family, if you're carload of family, you can drop them off at the front and then go park the car over there. We additionally added some handicap spaces right, right adjacent to that. So if someone's coming to an event there and they're, and they, they're handicap accessible, they can park right in front of the building. But this area would be an event, this, this drive access would be an event only access. So when there's nothing going on in that barn, there, there is no access to that drive approach. We had to keep it that way because road commission requirements for multiple egresses on a property. Moving to the south, further, we've got the, we've got the South House. And these, this little, the two little buildings right here, those are the bee, um.
The chicken coop in the house.
Chicken coops, I thought it was chicken coops there. I'll also point out, over in here, there's like a pollinator area. There's some natural plants for, that attract the bees and, and kind of keep, keep them, keep them going. So there's a natural area here that we would, that we would use and, and actually expand, as well as the trail that comes all the way around to the South House, to give, give like a walking trail, a nature trail, access throughout the entire property. Further down to the south, we have, this would be like overflow event parking. If there was a large, if there was a large event on the property, frankly, anywhere, but primarily on the south end, you could have the event parking there for, for your guests. We, we have a gazebo here with some seating that's built into the hill. There's a, there's a, there's a nice steep hill behind the South House. And that would make an ideal setting for, for natural seating to, to watch events in the gazebo or adjacent to the gazebo. So that's, that's pretty much all I had. John, did you have anything to add?
I think you hit all the high points, John.
So, yep, that's, those, this is the plan that we came up with. It is, again, dimensionally correct, it's something that the township can move forward with. It, it does work. And next steps would be, you know, we could, you can actually do engineering off of this plan, whereas the previous plan, it was, you weren't able to do that. Are there any questions?
I think I just want to add, in this plan, we took in consideration of the flood plains as well.
Yes, yep.
And that caused a movement of the township building in that parking lot and some of that structure.
Yes, exactly.
That way as well.
So you'll see, when you look at the handouts, it's fairly faint, it's like in a, in a light, in a gray or a light blue, you'll see like a hatch area, and that is the hundred year flood plain. What you have back here is the Schwartz Creek. And in flood events, I don't know if you guys got the rain up here that, that some parts of the state got, but there are areas that got what was considered a five hundred year storm. And, you know, there was water in the streets. So during those events, this whole area can be full of water. So you don't want to actually put a building in it because then if your building gets wet, then you have to have flood insurance, which is expensive, so. Any other questions, Chris Ross?
Yeah, I got it. The overflow parking, how do you get the cars there? Because there's no ingress or egress.
So now, today, that is, or I shouldn't say today, that has been used in the past as overflow parking. And cars would come off of this side street here. Actually, what our plan shows, trees planted here, you can actually drive in right in the corner of the property here. So today you can access it. I'm not sure, it, it can be used coming off the side street, but we would have to detail that out a little bit further.
Just, they've, they've always brought them in on the south end of the property by Elliott. One of the alternative plans that was worked out by the county was to have a drive actually come in off of Elliott. But in order to do that, we need to obtain that little corner of the property. I've already met with Dr. Johnson, who owns that, that property. That little corner is part of the whole parcel behind the farmstead. It's cut off by the, by the Schwartz Creek. And it's really not accessible to him, other than off of Elliott. We've met a couple of times about the possibility of getting that corner added to the farmstead. He wanted to see how things developed as we went along. Once we get the approval on what we see here tonight, that will be a conversation. I'll be able to go to him and say, here's what we've got, here's what we're doing. And eventually, we would work toward getting that access coming in so that traffic's not right on that five-point intersection that pushes them back a little bit.
What, you said the limit, there was a limit on ingress, egress from the county. What, is that per site, per length?
It's typically per property and it's based, it's based on the length of your frontage.
Okay.
And in this case, what you have, you've got a corner here, you've got, you know, the road's curving in, and the road's curving out there, so you, you have sight distance issues. So, and, and again, you don't want, for the safety of people coming in and out, you don't want a lot of, a lot of access. You want to keep it kind of down to the minimum. But also have, you know, again, this is a large site, a large narrow site. So having full interior vehicular circulation is pretty difficult. So our, our goal was to keep as much access as we could, but understanding what, you know, what the questions the county's going to ask when we go there to get, get these permitted.
And what's the square footage of the town hall shown there?
I don't know that I'll hand John to you on it, or did we, I'm not sure. Yeah, we have to double check on that.
And the number of parking places there was determined how, for the town hall area?
Well, it, it was determined on, on, on site use more than anything, and the, the estimation of, of events. So, you know, a 4H event and the township hall, those wouldn't be necessarily, we're, you know, township hall wouldn't be busy on the same time, like on a Saturday when there's a 4H event. But it's just trying to maximize the parking in the area. As, as things progress, we can, those can, those are things that can be detailed out and either reduced or expanded as we do.
I think it's important to note that the entrance way, I call it the doughnut, in front of the existing barn.
Yep.
That's an area that will be gated when that property's, when that event barn isn't being used. So people won't be stopping to pull in there, that will only be open during events.
Okay.
And that's because of its proximity to the main entrance, correct?
Right. Yeah, we, we anticipated a conflict because what, what the road commission's going to require is XL D cell lanes on a passing lane on the opposite side. So there, the beginning of the D cell lane and the entrance to that drive would be in conflict. So they would not allow there to be a full-time operational driveway for the end of that door.
And that's the same for the existing driveway to the North House as well, right?
Yes. Yeah, and actually the existing driveway to the North House would fall right in the D cell lane, which they wouldn't allow. We lost.
So are you saying then that the acceleration, deceleration lanes would need to be installed or built prior to usage of the site?
Prior to full build out, let's say. And I, I would say you need to build those prior to opening of the township hall. If it's a, like a 4H event, you can, you know, I, I would say prior to occupation, oh, oh, yeah, prior to occupying the site for formal use. Today, I mean, with the community garden there, you, you don't have that many vehicles pulling in and out on a, on an hourly basis, let's say. So if it'd be primarily an evening or a, a weekend activity, you wouldn't be required to have those XL D cell lanes for something like that. It's based on trips a day, trips per day in and out of the site.
But those, at, those acceleration, deceleration lanes are going to encroach on the existing property?
They're within the, they're within the right of way of the, the, the county right of ways. So they're not actually encroaching on the property, they're in, in the county right of way.
So you took those in consideration when you did the plan?
Yes.
As far as setbacks?
Mm-hmm, yes, that's accurate.
If I'm not mistaken, those were actually designed during the design work for North Hall Road.
They, they were initially laid out, yeah.
Yes.
They've been added in that exact location.
So almost a third, or maybe close to a half, is for dedicated to 4H items?
So I would say 4H is like from, from that area to the north, up to about here. I mean, I don't know if I would consider that parking's dedicated 4H parking. You've got trails up here, and, I mean, that's more multi-use, heightened trails. You know, there's, there's an existing pond there, so more of a nature trail area. So, yeah, 4H is, is, is a good section of it. Again, they're, they're fields. We were anticipating sizes, we're using the, the, the area that exists. Do they, you know, obviously we have to work the 4H and figure out what they need, what they want, and go from there.
Did the 4H include all that stuff from before, the proposal? Yeah?
Is there any other questions?
This barn is at, it's speed twice. Is that the dairy barn or is that what it is?
That would be the 4H barn at the north end.
Yeah, that's on, it's there, under the legend of the North Site.
It's supposed to be the park. But H is, is that's the dairy barn?
H is the dairy barn, yes.
This is the event area, so it's.
Oh, that, you, the 4H event area. There's the event barn that's further, like towards the center of the site, which is K.
Is that the, it's going to be that distance away, and you just say that parking?
Yes.
Any other questions? All right, I want to thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
We will move on to reports. I think I started with Mr. Burton last time, I'll go to Mr. Ruth.
Nothing for me this evening.
Okay, Mr. Burton?
Nothing for me, the only thing I have is what was covered in the planning commission, our number four for new business.
Okay, Treasurer Freeman?
My quarterly treasurer's report is included in your packet. That's all I have.
Okay, Clerk Winchester?
I have no report.
Okay, then it was supervisor report. So I have several things. We put out the RFP for the work on the barn, which is the back wall and the front doors. We only got one back, and it was quite an expensive bid. I took that RFP up to Curtin Lumber and I had Ray and Rob Curtin look at it, because I was curious what they thought. And they thought we could do better. So we came back and we took the RFP, which originally included the back wall and the two front doors, and we separated it into two individual RFPs. And we've put them back out, we've sent them back out to the contractors before. And we're looking at two separate RFPs for the front, the two front doors. The front door project, for those of you that have been by the barn, you see that door that's turned and wedged and part of it's come off. The old rail across the front of the barn is just that, it's an old rail, it's rusted. When it was put in, it was just put in through the barn boards, there weren't no additional support beam on the backside. The new project calls for a new support, it calls for new rails. And the new rails, those old rails, the door literally just sat up there so the wind could blow it or you could bounce it around and it could come off. The new rails are designed differently so that that can't happen. So that's all part of the specs for that new bid on the front. The old barn, or the existing doors, there are four. The new doors would call for just two, one on each side, so you wouldn't have all of the mishmash of the doors. And the existing doors, then, when they come off, all it would, would be saved to plug some of the holes around the barn as that project goes forward. And then the back wall, there's a spec sheet and the materials list and all that are included in those. So those will be coming in in the next few weeks and hopefully we'll have something to bring to the board next month. The sewer project on Dixie Highway that we've been looking at in conjunction with Groveland Township and with some of the partners on that project are, have now expanded to, to Brandon Township. Ortonville has issued their letter of intent. We're working with Holly Rec, which is the DNR, Groveland Oaks, which is Oakland County Parks, as well as Edlum and Shannon Distributors. That project, the money that the federal government sent to the county, two hundred and forty-eight million dollars, was earmarked for water and sewer projects and infrastructure. So we are currently working with the county Commissioner Hoffman, along with Commissioner Spiz, I hope I have that right. He's the commissioner for Brandon over that direction. They're trying to set up a meeting with Dave Coulter so that we can sit down with the Water Resource Commission and Dan Nash and have a meeting and talk about funding for that. That project has about ten million dollars in private funding from the different elements that I mentioned and is in need of about twenty-four million dollars to get it off the ground. They've been trying to put sewers in Brandon and Ortonville since nineteen fifty-eight. And it's always been an issue. And part of the issue is, these townships, Holly Township, Groveland Township, and Brandon Township, they don't have the population and they don't have the assessed values to fund a project like that. Some of your bigger townships, like Bloomfield Township or Waterford Township, can go into a project like that and do self-funding. We don't have that ability, so we're kind of at the mercy of the county, the Water Resource Commission. But with this money coming, we think it's the perfect timing. It's a perfect opportunity to see that project happen and to capture some of that private money. Just to tell you how serious some of the partners are, the DNR had actually released an RFP for about a two and a half million dollar project to replace their septic fields. They pulled that RFP in hopes of this project going through. We've had negotiations with Oakland County Health Department to get them across the line while they wait for this to be built, because they've got some severe problems out there. Oakland County Health Department's also working with Oakland County and Eagle in their plan going forward. And if we can secure this funding, then Oakland County Health Department will work with Shannon Distributors so that Shannon can build their next building, which is, which they're ready to do, and use the existing septic field that they put in, again, until this one's available. So it's, it's quite a complex project, we're working on it. At this point, it's kind of up to the county and whether or not we can secure funding to get it off.
What is the scope of the project, what are you talking about? Great Lakes Water Authority bringing water and sewer up Dixie Highway?
Oakland County would bring sewers in from Genesee County. That corner of the township sits in the Saginaw Basin, so it drains that way. It would bring the sewers down to Grange Hall Road. It would take, it would take two lines. It would bring one line down Grange Hall, which would then cross over, down Dixie to Grange Hall and cross over I seventy-five to where Alex's Market is. We have private investors that would like to build some buildings, one of them wants to put in a hotel. And of course, the sewers make that altogether different. So we're looking at partnerships with these investors to develop that. We've already had a couple of them say, I want this much, I would need that much, these are property holders in that area. Then the second line cuts across through Brandon Township down into Ortonville. And that's a separate portion of the project. Oakland County is the one that has funded the project to this point, that's the engineering and the concept. It would tie into the Kersley Interceptor, which Genesee County was looking to expand because they need more for Grand Blank area. So it's kind of a multi-unit project. Groveland themselves owns eighty acres that are attached to the ORV Park where the M one building is. And they want to develop that building. They also own the fire hall on the corner, they want to tear that building down and develop that. So they're going to need those resources. So they have a little over a million dollars to put into the project. So there's quite a lot of monies coming from different areas to make that happen. We're just trying to secure that final piece to get the project started and off the ground. But I'll keep you informed, at this point, we have nothing to do here. Holly did have it on our agenda, we put in our letter of approval that we'd like to see it happen. We did that several months ago, but I wanted to give you an update on where that project is. The CARES Act, the state has finally released the numbers. They did the division for us. The township will be, be receiving five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. While the village will be receiving, I think it's six hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. So we don't have to worry about that division. They start, they're starting to come through with parameters of where the money can be spent. They're running into roadblocks, because if you think about this, they sit down at a table and they try to figure out where does it make most sense to use the money? Then about the time they get ready to put that out, the township's in the north said, hold on, wait a minute. Nothing you have on that list, we will qualify for. And they won't be able to spend it because they don't have sewer, they don't have water up there, they don't have, I'm, I'm at a loss here, internet, what are they?
Broadband.
Broad, thank you, broadband. They don't have that kind of stuff up there. So the legislature has to go kind of back to the drawing board or the committee that's trying to figure that out. So we still don't have specifics, yes you can, no you can't, with parameters, but they're doing that. We do have to submit our application by the twenty-seventh, we're working on that, we'll have that in. The village is working on theirs as well. The next thing I can report is Eagle has issued the permit for the canoe slash kayak landing on Fish Lake Road. I talked to Sue Julian just this past week, that issue, permit has been issued, so they're getting ready to move forward on that. The county will be replacing two culverts on Fish Lake Road next year. We were able to get included in that plan on the east side of Fish Lake Road, between where the landing is and the railroad tracks. That culvert that goes right there, they will add additional feet on the east side of that so that there will be a walking bridge over that. So that's good news on that one. And then last, I want to report, we have it on our agenda on our new business for the appointment of a park commission. I went to the park commission meeting last week, and the packet that I took with me there is in your packet for tonight. This has been a very controversial appointment. There were three names in that even Joe Hutchins mentioned in the parks meeting that those names had controversy around them. The parks commission had gone through a committee and had brought a set of names through, and then names changed and they brought through another name. And I had gone to the parks commission and explained that if you, for the board members that were at the last township meeting, we had one of the park commissioners come here and was concerned that we didn't have it on that agenda. Those papers are in your packet as well. They held a special meeting, we didn't rece. They held a special meeting. We didn't receive the name until the 15th. Our meeting was on the 16th. Our agenda had already been put out and we didn't put it out in there. There was this big question about the 45 days thing. That's all explained in the paperwork in your packet. The 45 days, that resignation, which is in our packet, has to be accepted by the board and the 45 days would technically by law start there. I know that traditionally, we've allowed the parks to bring a name forward and recommend it. And in the past, we've approved those names. It's, there's never been controversy like there has with this one. In this particular case, I had an issue with bringing one of the names forward. We're all familiar with Mr. Love. He's been vocal on many things in local government. I had an opportunity as a chair of a commission for the village to bring his name forward, to put him on a commission. That didn't work well. And I said, as the supervisor, I wasn't willing to bring a name forward. There is another name that was in there. You see the resume for that one. I felt that was a better fit for our parks with the experience that was behind it. That name has turned out to be very controversial as well. From that parks meeting, we got two more submissions for people. And just to clarify, Sherilyn Everly, the paper you signed in was a willingness to serve on the park board? Okay, the reason I asked that is that paper was actually a Village of Holly submission from back in March, I believe was the date. But I assume that that's what that meant with the resume that you submitted. And then we had another gentleman in the community come forward and Jim didn't know.
No, he's just asking me why we're doing this now and not under new business.
Well, it is in new business. I'm doing it as part of the report now so that people can understand going forward. But you'll find it. So getting back to that. So we had two people come forward, add their names to that. And the other name is Kurt Miskiewicz. And he submitted his letter of intent. You have that was sent to you via email. So you've got that part in your packet and his resume is there. And this is a new, a newer resident to the town. But this is a name that has an exceptional background and resume and is a name that can be brought forward without controversy. So that's the name I'll be offering when we get to number three. We don't typically put the names on the agenda. So I wanted to say that coming forward. That's why I did it under supervisor's report. That being said, we will move on to public comment on agenda items only. Members of the public can address the board on agenda items only, once recognized by the supervisor. Comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes. The board may expend this time, extend this time by a majority vote. Prior to addressing, the board members of the public shall state their name and address for the record. A second public comment is available after new business for all other comments. Those that are interested in public comment, by the way, we have the podium set up with the microphone, so you'll be on the video as well. It's just important that we don't move the podium because the minute we start to back it up, it'll go out of the camera angle. So those that wish for public comment? Donna?
Good afternoon, board. Donna McBride, 710 East Maple. I'm here today to speak in regards to the appointment of the new parks commissioner. As the last person appointed to this board, I think it is important to speak on my experience and how that has differed from the process we are seeing now. I will walk you through the timeline and point out the concerns during this process. Commissioner Roach submitted her resignation at the park board on 5/12/21. The chair of the board, Sean Krugel, spoke to Mr. Cullis within days of this resignation. At no time during this conversation did Mr. Cullis request that the resignation must be submitted in writing. A third-person committee was formed on the park board to review all the candidates and to recommend who they thought best to fill the empty seat. The regular meeting on 6/9 to discuss this recommendation was canceled due to some commissioners being sick. A special meeting was held on June 14th as the seat had been empty for a month and we were eager to fill the position to get back to business. At this meeting on June 14th, in a five to one vote of the board, the commissioners voted to have John Love fill the empty seat. On June 15th, Sean Krugel emailed Mr. Cullis and told him the board had voted for their recommendation and it was John Love. We at the board were under the impression that the township board would be discussing this recommendation on their June 16th meeting. When I found out it was not the case, I came to the town meeting concerned that the new replacement would be put in place, wouldn't be put in place until August meeting. And Mr. Cullis would instead intend, instead intended to bring his own recommendation. At this meeting on July 14th, Mr. Cullis came and explained that he would indeed be bringing his own recommendation. He produced emails and recommendations for Mr. Engelberg and yet had none for neither Mr. Love or Mr. LaPlante. He also produced an email from Mr. Engelberg that was written on June 15th, the very day Mr. Krugel emailed Mr. Cullis at the park board recommendation of the day, the day before the board's meeting on June 16th. Yet interestingly enough, Mr. Engelberg's email was written to Mr. Cullis three hours before Mr. Krugel gave Cullis written notice of the board vote. No such emails were produced for Mr. LaPlante or Mr. Love. On June 17th, Mr. Engelberg's private message, "My daughter on Facebook." In these messages, he maligned my character and the character of those on the board who he was seeking to serve on. Mr. Engelberg was fully aware that my daughter is on a high-risk pregnancy and yet he thought it was proper to message her and cause her undue stress by threatening me and attacking my integrity. To this knowledge, he did not threaten, to my knowledge, he did not threaten any other board member and only singled me out for his attacks. In this message, he accused me of seeking a raise for the park director, which I did not. And I also claimed to have inside knowledge of the voting, of our voting process. All of this has come as a shock to me, as I was the last person appointed to our board of this... I'm so mad. And none of this angling or drama was present during the appointment and swearing in. Commissioner Peters resigned.
Donna, you're at the three minutes. How much more do you have?
I got very little.
Okay, do you want to extend the time? We need a motion.
Make a motion to extend the time?
Motion by Burton. Was that humor?
Yep.
No, it was Steve. Burton, support Ruth to extend three minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead.
All of this has come to a shock to me, as I was the last person appointed to this board and none of this angling or drama was present during my appointment and swearing in. Commissioner Peterson resigned from our board at our meeting on January 8th, 2019. The board recommended my appointment that very night. I believe your board then appointed me at your next meeting on January 15th. I attended my first board meeting as a commissioner the very next month. I was not contacted by Mr. Cullis to submit recommendations, nor did he seek to bring his own recommendation. At our board last week, Mr. Cullis stated he was doing this appointment by the book and produced emails from a staff attorney for the Michigan Township Association stating the rules to follow in regards to the resignation of township boards. I find it odd that only now he is seeking to follow the rules when it clearly benefits him and yet he did not find it necessary when it was for an appointment, for my appointment. To be clear, there is nothing prohibiting him from following our recommendation. It is his choice to be made. I am asking you tonight to question why there is so much disparity between the last appointment and this one. Who would be seeking, who would seek to benefit from these changes and procedures? And why would they do so? My knowledge of Mr. Engelberg is that he tends to quit when things get hard. And usually when he quits or loses things, he can be particularly dramatic. He has no, he has not, he's only attended one of the meetings since I've been on the board. And that meeting, it was a Zoom meeting, and he actually had Mr. Feeney read his comment because he was too busy doing something else. He undermines the director of the board at many, at any opportunity. Mr. Love, by contrast, has attended many meetings and has made some helpful suggestions. I certainly don't agree with him on everything, but I feel it's a better suited for our board and to represent our community. I implore you to reject Mr. Cullis's recommendation and indeed honor the vote of the board. Thank you.
I have a question. What was the exact threat? Did I tell you?
Well, we have, yes. We really might have to do this.
These are all the messages that he sent to me.
I mean, I don't understand. How do you tell who's the strong?
Okay. This is what Tony says and this is what she answered. And then the rest of us, it's all what Tony had said.
Anyone else for public comment? I was, well, well, Mr. Love had his hand up next to him. John, Mr. Murphy was saying something to you.
Okay, beam me up. We're the heart of the parks.
Start with your name and address.
John Love, 200 North Saginaw. We're the heart of the parks and the state owns not a few acres, but square miles in the township. And I appreciated the, when we sent out the tax bills and we got some information about the parks. Although the park commission didn't have a chance to look at it. The park commission is an elected body. It's not appointed. And these are the people that were elected to that job. And as a consequence, there should be some respect to their evaluation of what is the best for their group. It has to be passed through to the overriding township board. But that is something that they have to live with and work with and they're better informed on it. As far as Supervisor Cullis's disregard for my attitude, I was on the historic commission, appointed, and at the meetings, Cullis would ramble on and even repeat himself and I objected to that. And also, he knows more than anybody, including me. I've only saved a landmark historic building in the village and had spent a lot of time and money and effort to make this historic village a better village. But no matter, I don't deserve to have anything that is a reflection on his tenure as the supervisor of this community. And I think that's inappropriate and disrespectful. As far as what my goals are, I've been attending the meetings because I want to help make this, the parks that we have more available and knowledgeable for the community so that they know about these things. Took me a while to find out about the beach and the trail and some of the aspects that we have that are great opportunities for the people of the community. And if they knew about it, they could take advantage of it more than they do. So that's what my interest in it. And I just wanted to at least come down and talk to the board and I guess the community that's here too about this situation. That is, in my mind, disrespectful to an elected body and shouldn't be tolerated.
Thank you for your comments. I'm sorry, I don't remember your name.
That's fine.
But I'm going to know it because you're going to say it right here for us.
Exactly.
My name is Amber Keier. I live at 710 East Maple Street. I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here in regards to the appointment of a new commissioner of the parks board as well. I was born and raised in this town and bought my house here in 2013. With the exception of seven years during which I served this country and went to college, this town has been my home. During my time in the service, I had the privilege to see many countries and to form my core character values. This is important as to why I'm here today, as most of you don't know me and I tend to stay out of the fray of local politics. In the Army, we go by a group of core values. Those values form an acronym that spells leadership. Those values are loyalty, duty, respect, selfless service, honor, integrity and personal courage. These values represent me and the things I fight for. Tonight, I'm here to defend them. It is not lost on me that we consider this town a Purple Heart community and yet very few of our elected or appointed offices are held by veterans. I know you are one. I myself am a Purple Heart recipient. I lost my friend and half my eyesight due to a roadside bomb on July 17th, 2004. It is not lost on me that some of the biggest gripes about our local politics could be managed more efficiently by people who lived these, their lives to these standards. I have to admit, I don't know much about Mr. Love, but I'm here to speak on what I do know. When I came home from overseas, Mr. Love had a sign in front of his yard. We all know he loves his signs. On that sign, he had written, "Holly Loves Amber Keier." I had never met the man in my life, but he made a point to make me feel welcome just a mere four weeks after losing my best friend and still recovering from the wounds I sustained in combat. That was his character. As a veteran himself, he knew it was important to those returning home to know what they fought for, that it meant something. And for that, I'm forever grateful. Tonight, we're here because Mr. Love was recommended by the township parks board and there seems to be an assault on not only his character, but on the character of the board who recommended him. And frankly, there is also an assault against the integrity of our most precious right as citizens and that is the right to a free and a fair vote. I have served in countries in which one man has cast aside the rights of the citizens and made corruption the law of the land. It did not end well for his citizens or for himself. For what is done in the dark will always come to the light, and tonight, I'm here to be a spotlight. In a five to one vote, Mr. Love was recommended by the board and in one swift move, the votes of those five people can be overturned by one man. The vote was handled fairly and without prejudice. While there were three applicants, only two were really up for debate. As is often the case in small towns, alliances were assumed and broken. The loser of the vote, instead of tactfully taking his lumps, decided to threaten a member of the board and cajole the only man who could potentially change the vote. I know there were threats, as they were made to me against my mother. And I know there was cajoling due to the emails Mr. Cullis handed out at the last parks board meeting. Instead of a straightforward process on an almost unanimous vote, we are here because one man couldn't take a loss and instead sought to undermine the votes.
Excuse me. Are you real close or you got more?
Yeah, no, real close. I got like two more paragraphs.
Okay. Stop. The board wished to extend her time?
Make a motion to extend the time.
Burton, Ruth, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Go ahead.
We are here because one man couldn't take a loss and instead sought, and instead sought to undermine the votes of the very board he seeks to serve on. Mr. Cullis, of course, has his own right to vote the way he sees fit and I will fight to my last day for that right. That is not up for debate. What is up for debate is the transparency of that vote and its integrity. By his own word, Mr. Cullis has always accepted the recommendation of the board and sought to respect their autonomy. This vote is different and tonight, I'm asking you to question why. We are somehow supposed to believe that he had some crisis of conscience that has led him to change the rules in the middle of the game or more accurately, start following the rules he has taken an oath to uphold. He has muddied the waters to make it seem deep and I'm here to show you how shallow that argument is. Too often, I hear people speak of their rights while conveniently leaving out their responsibilities. Tonight, I need you to think about your responsibilities, not only to your own senses of integrity, but to the very people you represent. I know the risks you take by making a stand, as I too have stood for things I held dear at the expense of my own life. As someone who is to be a mother, I need you to think about what we're teaching our children. Do we teach them that losing gracefully breeds character or do we teach them that someone can always be bought? Do we teach them to bully or do we teach them to fight fair? Do we teach them to bully, or do we teach them to fight fair? Do we teach them that corruption is inevitable, or do we teach them that those, there are those brave enough to break its cycle? Do we teach them to be afraid of standing up, or do we teach them that there's far more to lose by standing down? Do we teach them to follow the rules, or do we teach them to only follow rules when they benefit them or when they are, someone they are friends with? Tonight, I am asking you to be brave, to have integrity, for integrity can never be bought, it can only be sold. Let this board be not a home for cowards, or any other board for that matter. This vote is not one of life and death. We will all go home safe tonight. Many who serve this country don't have that same guarantee. Honor them tonight by not letting truth or integrity die in the face of small-town politics. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else for public comment? No, Cheryl, Mary Blanchard's next. I'm trying to do it in the order that hands went up.
Mary Blanchard, 3444 Old Creek Drive, Holly, Michigan. I actually have a question before I comment. Number six, the Eagle test results, what would that be regarding?
I think this here.
Is that regarding the results of the Rice Lake and Bush Lake?
Yes.
I would like to comment on that, just in regards to the fact that even though the results did come back low, below the drinking standards and the reporting standards, they do not necessarily reflect that there is not PFAS in Bush Lake or Rice Lake. Mike Wilczynski, the geologist who's been working with us for over a year, had worked with Grass Lake, and they also had low testing results, but the fish samples that they had actually came back very high, and now they have a fish advisory on their lakes. Regarding the Holly Farmstead Development Plan, I would like to comment that in that development plan, with the extensive 4H property, that I would hope that when that's developed, that there is extensive security cameras and sound available. The other thing is.
Mary, excuse me, what was your second word? I heard security camera.
And sound.
Oh, sound, okay.
I guess my other comments regarding the park commissioner. I served as a park commissioner for three sessions, and I do not believe that we ever had any comment or question from the township board regarding commissioners that we had appointed during that whole timeframe. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Cheryl, next.
I'm Cheryl Lynn Everly. I'm from 314 Hadley Street. I know I'm qualified for the job, so I guess I'm gonna have to assume I must be controversial. If running the Renaissance Festival for two years, the Crim Festival of Racism, most of the recreational and park programs in Flint doesn't qualify me for Holly Township Parks, I guess I'm not qualified. But I do want to say, the reason I put my name in is because one of the realities of being in public business, and I know this from having watched my husband serve on the village council for years, is that oftentimes, your options are really limited. And I have to say, out of 12,000 people, we only had three people put in their application for the parks position. So we didn't really let people know that that position was available. There should have been a shitload of people coming out for that job. And the reason that I did turn my name in was so that there would be other options. And I hope that you will make the best option for what's going on with the parks, because they're really making some headway. Tony's got programs going all over the place, those disc golf people are happening, you know, tournaments. Our parks is on the crux of doing some really good stuff, and it would be awful if it got derailed because of personalities that we know are toxic. And I'm gonna share another ism with you that I think applies to a couple of things here tonight too, which is, the best predictor of future behavior is past behavior. And that applies to individuals, and it applies to entities. And as I look at this, my recommendation is, sell that property while it's at its highest and best use value.
All right, thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Tony.
Tony Burton, I'll just give you my address here in Holly, because I'm here more than I'm home, which is 54142 East Holly Road. I've been on the park, I've served as the park director for 31 years, and I just have to say, it saddens me to see that this process came to the way it did as far as all the anger and name-calling and stuff. I know, I don't know. I've met Kurt. He walks in the park on a regular basis. He stopped by several times to talk to me about projects he could do for the parks. I know John. He comes to the park on a regular basis. I think he, you know, he's got a definite passion for it. I know Cheryl Lynn. She's got a definite passage, or passion for it as well. I'm glad to see that you've removed the other person's name from the thing. I will be standing up later to tell you guys about all these events, unless it's okay with you guys, if I do it now.
We've got some people that we want to finish up with.
Okay, so I will stand back up and tell you about all these lovely events happening out at the parks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Joel Hutchins, next. I was picking a name and people were pointing and I was trying.
Joel Hutchins, 419 Thomas Street, Holly, Michigan. I've been involved in local government since 1992, in the village and the township as elected officials. In the last few elections we've had, in the federal government and state, there's been a lot of controversy. And mistrust has been added to the voters now, they're not trusting their government. And we don't need to see it down here in the trenches. Our Parks Commission had a, had a recommendation vote of five-to-one. We're elected officials. That should weigh pretty good on something. We do our due diligence. This is a small town. There's people that don't like me. Oh, well, don't vote for me. I try to do the best I can, be the honest person I can be, and represent the community. There's a lot of people that don't like other people, and that's too bad. I guess you gotta get to know people and at least give them a chance. Let them prove themselves. And we gotta keep our faith and our trust in our local government. We're the ones down here in the trenches. The feds and the, and the state don't care about us down here. We just get crumbs. So let's keep our crumbs to ourselves and let's keep going despite them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Kirkshank, you had your hand up next.
Since I'm on the agenda items later, would you like me to hold until that, or would you like me to just make the comments now?
Why don't you make them that one under the format?
Good evening, board. So my comments are revolving around the item that has my name on it for a potential parcel split that the Planning Commission met with last month. So I wanted to make a couple of comments around that, because it felt really odd the entire time going through this process. And I've sat on planning commissions twice, two separate times. So the chair controlled the discussion rather than encouraging dialogue amongst the board most of the time that was on there. Two dissenting public comments were able to speak easily to the board without any interruptions, but the two that were in favor of the split were unable to mute their mics at all through the entire meeting. Found that very odd. The logic and the reason for the denial is still even head-scratching when you read page 74 of the master plan and there being a two-acre parcel, literally a stone's throw from where I'm trying to split a parcel now, along with being three separate parcels away, you can see from that map right over there and that giant yellow, those are all one-and-a-half-acre zone parcels, which are literally three from mine, and including a two-acre parcel literally right next door to me. I also had letters from all of the property owners, except for one around there, who all spoke in favor of the split itself. The owner who spoke out against was trying to take that property, and now it is also mine. We are in litigation now with lawyers about her trying to take some of the property. So her, her comments are, you know, somewhat biased and that she's trying to keep people out of there. She also stated that she contacted Treasurer Freeman for a map, and was provided two showing the topographies. That was also odd, since the township clerk is the person you should be contacting for the planning zoning. Trustee Burton took some time, you know, pause before he actually voted, which means he was, he wasn't overly convinced of the process either. Giving his newness on the board, he probably voted with the majority, it's not to cause waves. But all of these things together, including the OMA violation in the first few seconds, because none of the individuals that were on the board in the Zoom call stated their location during the Zoom, which is one of the things, I also run the board meetings for Holly Academy, that has to be done every single time. So all of those together, it was extremely odd to go through this process with all of these things, thinking it was an easy slam dunk, and then being slapped in the face for me trying to split a parcel to get other individuals in here who are in town to be property owners. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Diane Baraki. I live at 3125 Belford Road, and my land is contiguous to the parcel that we're seeking about for the zoning request. And I just wanted the board to know that I do agree with the recommendations that the Planning Commission put forth to deny the request, as well as the recommendation that came from the mechanic planners based on sound land use principles and a lot of facts about the area and the zoning that's there. This split would result in spot zoning in the area for which this parcel exists. So I just wanted to speak where my, my opinion was coming from. So thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else for public comment? None appearing, then we will move forward. We have no old business. Moving to new business is the Holly Farmstead Development Plan. You received an email with some papers from HRC for the next phase of the project to go forward. We're not gonna look at those tonight. We've had some developments come on, and we're gonna take a step back, some changes, and I'll bring that to you next month. I think all we're looking for at this point is if everybody's still in focus and approves the plan that we've got here in moving forward. As far as the next engineering project, we need to take a step back with a couple of the developments that have come up, and we'll present that next month. Any more questions on that?
What did we pay for the site plan, and what is it expected to cost for all this building?
Well, so, so for those of you that are here for the first time seeing this project, and to answer your question, this is a project that can go over years as funding becomes available, as grants become available. It's taking a property that the township has used or owned for almost 20 years now, and, and hadn't got a lot of use out of it, and it's gonna create some use. It's also a place to put the new township office on the property, and we've had grant money at this point, we've had $100,000 donated to the township for the implementation of part of this. There are other properties like this through the county. One is over by 12 Oaks. One is in, there's one in Rochester, there's one in Bloomfield, there's one in Waterford Township, right on the border with West Bloomfield. These are projects that allow for education and for programming to go on in conjunction with 4H through Oakton County. Oakton County is involved in the programming in those other, what's the one out by 12 Oaks all of a sudden? I can't think of the name. That's the one you've been out. Anyway, if, if anybody's been to 12 Oaks Mall, it's the one across the street behind the big fence. And all of those farmstead projects, they have programming all summer long, and they are booked solid. They're, the one group that we met with said that they opened their programming up at nine o'clock in the morning, and by 9:07, they were booked for the summer. So this was property that was originally purposed for the preservation of that farmstead. It's my understanding that the original charter was signed in the south house for the township.
And the intent was for the township hall.
And the township hall. So as this project progresses forward, there are, we already have grant monies for the work we've been doing. We have grant money for the fence going across the front of the property, and we've got more money that we're looking at. Anybody else have questions?
How much did we, have we paid to have this planned, then?
We approved this a couple of meetings back for $23,000. Do you have the number where we came in?
We're just, just below that.
We're just below that?
We're just below that, yeah.
So then, why is this on the agenda?
Well, because originally, we were gonna look at the next step, but there's been a couple of developments that have come along that we're working on, and we're going to take a step back and then present it again in August.
So we're not voting on this thing? My position's the same as it's always been. The barn has been under construction for over three years. The voters are becoming very impatient, the taxpayers, to see that happen. My position is, that needs to be completed. I really hate to spend time and resources on other things. It's like that was phase one of the project, and you don't move on to other phases with the taxpayers' money unless you've completed phase one, and it's been at least three years ongoing project, and it's still not done.
Okay. Any, any other comment? All right, then we will move on to new business number two, acceptance of the resignation of the park commissioner. That resignation was received by the park board and had not been sent to the village or to the township. So I actually called and requested that it be sent over, that's why you see it sent over on the date that it was.
June 18th? The date's all over here.
Yeah, June 18th is when it was sent to the township. The date of the original is May 10th. If you look at the papers that I submitted, if you look at the state law, the appointments to the parks are supposed to be made by the township board, the names brought forward by the supervisor. And yes, we've had a tradition of the park board bringing a name forward and bringing it to the township board. Never before have we had such controversy around a name or an appointment like we had. I was visited immediately by board members that aren't here this evening, weren't able to be here, on, on issues going forward on this. And I was then called and said that the committee was bringing one name forward, they got to the meeting, and it got flipped again, and it came back with a different meeting. The question's been raised this evening of, why would I care what name's brought forward? And one of the speakers tonight said that history teaches us a lesson and can show us the light of things to go forward. Mr. Love has been active in many of the meetings. He is responsible for saving, as he called it, the gray lady, which is the house across from the post office. I was on the village council at that time. I actually helped him get that process through. The board was gonna tear that house down, and I said, if we have private citizens that are willing to step up, I thought that was the right thing to do. We put it out for bid process, somebody else bid the property, and it stands there today with all remodeled, with a fresh coat of paint, and looks better than it ever has. As the chair of the Historic District Commission, there was an opening on that chair, or on that committee.
Excuse, excuse me, point of order, we're on number two, acceptance of the resignation of the park commissioner, and we should act on that, and then on number three.
Oh, okay.
We talk about the appointment of the new park commissioner, then that would be more appropriate for your comments.
Okay. So chair, entertain a motion to accept the resignation.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of the park commissioner.
Motion by Burton, support by Winchester. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we go to number three, which is the appointment. So, thank you. So um, thank you for that, Mark, so let's keep the point of order going. So um, back to what I was saying. So I had an opportunity um to fill a vacancy on the Historic District Commission. It was, there was three months left on the end of a term and John Love was interested in that seat and I brought the name forward. Uh, some of the powers to be at the village weren't necessarily in favor of that and I said, this is a passion he's got, this is an opportunity to give him a chance to funnel some of that passion and do some good. And I thought it would be a good appointment. I said, if it doesn't work out at the end of three months, you don't have to reappoint him. So we brought him on the commission. And Mr. Love is correct, he and I didn't agree with things and as he said, I talked about things. The problem is that commission receives their power from the village council and they follow the guidelines of the Secretary of the Interior for historic preservation. We got into those meetings and as I told the people at the Parks Board, you could talk to Steve McGee who was in charge of that. Mr. Love didn't wanna follow the procedure. He didn't care what the rules were. He didn't care the order of the meeting. And it went poorly. We then had a workshop, what we did a bus tour, and that worked very poorly. In fact, the village made the decision not to have the next month's meeting so that we could avoid that and, and the name was removed. I do have a responsibility when I bring a name forward. And I said, I claim with clear conscience, bring that name forward. This board has a right to do whatever they decide to do going forward. In that process, Cheryl Lynn Everly's correct. She, she submitted her name and uh Mr. Um, Moskovich submitted his name as well. You have both of those submissions in front of you. And I thought uh with the other board members that had come to my office with their concerns and what they wanted and with the um controversy that was around this, when I saw the resume and the letter of intent from Mr. Moskovich, I thought the best way to avoid all this controversy is to go through that. In, in the future going forward, so we don't find this in, in, so we don't find ourselves in the position, we should follow the, the, the rule of law. The resignation comes here and this board will um go forward with that. Like I said, I can in clear conscience bring that name forward. I can bring Mr. Moskovich's. The, the other thing that concerns me is that when a board comes up, when the responsibility falls with this board, based on what Mr. Hutchinson said, he thinks in his mind that we should rubber stamp whatever name comes forward, whether we have issues with it or not. There's, there's a planning commission thing that's coming in front of us tonight. And again, those things come to the board for a reason. This board is to look at those and to make decisions on them. If it was the other way, then it wouldn't be written that way. I didn't make the law the way it was. And I looked at it, so uh the night that I, the name that I would bring before you tonight is this um Kurt Moskovich. You have those papers in front of you. Tony uh Brinker spoke um in favor of that name as well. So I would make a motion to appoint Mr. Moskovich. By the way, just to clear the record, this is a fourteen-month position because it'll be on the ballot in twenty-twenty-two to elect somebody to finish out the last two years of that term. These are four-year terms. So the appointment tonight is for fourteen months and then that position will be open and on the ballot. At that time, Mr. Moskovich can run for that and all of the other names that were on there can run for it as well. So um, that's my motion. Is there support?
I'll support that.
Okay. Then we have a motion for Kurt Moskovich. He's in the audience tonight. He's with us as well. Um, there is support for it. Is there any further discussion?
Kurt, what are you gonna do with your day job?
Um, I work part-time for my wife.
Oh, okay. Well, that's not too recent.
Did you have comments?
So does it, does it fall to the supervisor to uh put out requests for um people to serve on the Park Commission?
It's, it's not stated in the law. The, the law is in front of you. It's part of your pack.
That's why I was asking the question, 'cause I did not see that. So you just took that upon yourself to do that?
To do what?
To solicit for people to serve on the Parks Board.
I didn't solicit. The Parks Board solicited and then the second two names came in after the controversy from last week's meeting. I don't know if, if either of these people knew of the opening prior to the last Parks Board meeting. Cause Cheryl Lynn's was, they were both submitted after that. Am I correct? Yeah.
As I said in my, my comments when I saw what was going on, first of all, I was appalled with the enrollment agreement without applying, which to me is uh, to Mr. Freeman's question, how does that information get disseminated? And then, so that's what I do and I'm gonna assume you might have done the same thing.
So, so um, and then to, to answer that question, normally we don't put out, it's, it's just up to the supervisor to bring a name forward. On this particular one, it was put out that way. I'm not sure what format the park used to put that up, but if you remember the last board meeting we had here, um, I think it was Krista Kopawatz that stood up and wondered how come she didn't know about it. And, and she brought that up as well, so um it was a concern. Is there any other discussion?
Well, I personally don't think it was handled right.
Okay. Well, and this board has a right to vote?
Any way they want to.
How they feel.
Right.
So.
And, and as I've, I have stated to you before, there's nothing that precludes the supervisor from making motions, but historically, all my observations have been that the supervisor refrains from making motions because they're serving as the chairman. Because that gives the impression that they're leading the board in a direction that they want them to go. But there's nothing that precludes the supervisor from doing that statutorily that I'm aware of.
Okay.
For other appointed positions, is there a way to advertise for, I mean, do we do that typically or have we done it?
I mean.
Yeah.
We have.
We have for other things.
Oh, have we?
Yeah. When we didn't have any names in, we've advertised for them.
Right.
But that's, yeah, it doesn't happen often.
Oh, okay. Yeah, 'cause as I say, typically we have names that...
Mm-hmm.
I, I have names for different positions.
Right, there was a, a long period of time where we had a hard time filling positions on boards.
That would be before I was here.
Do we have an option to let this go for another board meeting, timeless?
We, so I checked into that earlier. We approve it tonight. There are, there is a gap of the exact days before our next meeting.
There's, we have to do it within forty-five days.
Yep, and we will have our next meeting by forty-five days.
Yes.
But is it forty-five days from when the town, George received it or?
No.
You have, you have the answer to that question in your paperwork. That forty-five day starts tonight.
Oh.
And it, there's a um, the opinion from the Michigan Township Association.
Right.
The resignation was accepted tonight. You can, you have forty-five days to fill it because it'll tell you there, if we don't fill the position, it goes to the um county clerk, which goes to the state and then they...
No, they, they call a special election.
They call a special election, so. So yes, that, that, I supplied all the papers that were involved in this to walk us through that. Is there any other discussion?
So, I just to make sure though, so we do have, our next meeting will be within the forty-five days?
Correct.
Yes. Yeah, our next meeting's Aug-, or yeah, August, I don't have a count.
I think it's twenty-eight days from now, I think is what it was.
So you're thinking maybe it's better to put it off?
Yeah, so I would say we should advertise. I don't know, I, I was gonna make a motion, but we gotta vote on this motion I think first.
There's a motion on the table.
Unless you wanna withdraw your motion.
Um, sure, I can withdraw my motion if the board would like to go the other way.
Yeah, I need to withdraw my support, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I would make a motion to wait one more board meeting to make the final decision, but in the meantime, do the advertising to get more resumes and more people interested in the job.
Okay.
Support.
So motion by uh trustee Ruth, support by clerk Winchester. Is there any more discussion on that? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
No.
Oh.
No.
Okay. Um, we will move on to David and Kelly Crookshank's request for zoning from AGR Agricultural Residential, um, which has a minimum of five acres, uh, to rural estate, minimum two and a half acres for uh the personal number that's mentioned here on Great Barrington Drive, which is off of Belford Road.
We have John here.
Yes, so uh, just real quick from what I, I gathered from our meeting, again, I'm no expert in planning. Um, but the Planning Commission did vote uh to not, or voted not to recommend and based on my understanding from the discussions that we had, it was based on the future land use map and them having to spot zone this parcel and then trying to keep away from spot zoning several parcels going forward.
You have Mr. Jackson here this evening. He was gonna talk.
Take it away.
Yeah, well, I, I'm not sure I'm gonna do much better than that. I did bring this map just so we get, and I can apologize for covering up this beautiful plan. Um, so I thought this would give a little context, you know, uh, to the applicant's request, which is to rezone a piece of property to allow it to be split into two, two and a half acre lots. So currently it's a five acre lot. It's, it's located right, right here. This is the site. In, in this particular map, this is sort of a map of the existing lot sizes in the vicinity. And if you know where this area is, north of Mitchell, uh, west of North Holly Road is an area in the township.
Can you strip off the signs for me?
I sure can, sorry about that. Uh, so the area, the general vicinity of this map is north of Mitchell Road, uh, west of North Holly Road, okay? And in the township's future land use plan and master plan, it's an area that's designated primarily for maintaining large lots in open space, these are the natural features and uh minimizing the number of, the amount of density and the number of splits and that sort of thing. So it's an area for long-term preservation. So in this particular map, again, this is a map that shows the lot sizes. And the red dots, the hand, the sprinkling, the small number of red dots here are lots that are two and a half acres or less. Okay? All of the gray areas are larger than two and a half acres. So you can see the vast majority of the land in this area that the township's kind of preserved is already fairly large lots. And in fact, the vast majority of them are actually five acres or more in size. Uh, the existing development on Ravenswood here, you can see, which is zoned for one and a half acre lots, is currently approximately five acre lots and are unlikely to ever be split because of their configuration. They're sort of narrow and deep. So it's not likely that Ravenswood would ever be uh split to create one and a half acre lots. The uh development that the applicant's property is in consists of primarily five acre lots or larger. There's one here that's eighteen, over eighteen acres. There is one two acre lot that is at the corner uh and that predated the development of this site into five acre or like your lots. So that, that's sort of just a little bit of context. So there's not very many lots over here that are less than two and a half acres. The vast majority of them are five acres or larger. The vast majority of them are five acres or larger. So when the township did its master plan, which is this middle uh diagram here, this middle map, the idea was again to preserve the open space. So the future land use designations in this area, which consists of this light green and this dark green, all call for lots that are five acres or larger in size. Okay, so the plan, the vision of the township is to preserve this area with lots that are at least five acres or larger in that area. That's the future plan for the, of the township. That's township's plan. It went through public hearings, went through public engagement process and that's what the residents of this township wanted, large lots, keep the development away from this area of the, of the township. So the applicant's requesting rezone this, this property, I'm gonna scooch over here. This, this parcel right here. And I wanted to put this zoning map up here just to sort of illustrate. They, they wanna rezone this to uh rural estate, which is two and a half acre minimum lot size. And you can see just visually that it represents a single isolated spot on the map. It's inconsistent with the future land use plan. And you have the other rationale that we have in our review letter, but I just wanted to point that out. So the Planning Commission's recommendation to you was to deny the applicant's request and we believe that's definitely consistent with the goals and objectives that are in the master plan. So I mean, if any of you have any questions?
Okay.
Well, I'm just interested, the audience, how did those, all those red dots happen then if they're?
They all predated zoning.
What, predated by how, how much?
Well, this one, I know this one here I think was, uh, there was a house on it, I think, a house or something on it that was back in the fifties or sixties or something like that.
Okay, but the others?
Probably similar, similar history.
Probably or are?
They, legal non-conforming.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, yeah.
There's, there are, just so you know, there's numerous non-conforming.
Right.
Parcels throughout the whole township.
Yes.
That were created at a time that predated the zoning.
Okay.
So, so the claim.
So somebody wants to split one of those, the bigger red, they can do that?
The bigger red?
Yeah, like those right there?
No.
They couldn't split it to five acres or?
The, the, the red ones are, are two and a half acres or less. They're two and a half acres or less, so you couldn't split those.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, yeah, I'm looking at a different thing in your, on your report as a, as a, some that are, appear to be bigger than that.
Oh, there are lots that are bigger than that. Like this one right here is almost eighty acre. You could split that one all day long, like five acre lots.
Sure.
Right? And this one is twenty-two acre. This one right here on the, on the same street that the applicant was on is eighteen acre. You can split that one into three lots, three five acre lots. So there's splits that could occur right now under the existing zoning. But now on the applicant's property, which is only five acres and you want it to be a half.
And was there a uh town president, or I mean a public presentation of this or sort of a current one?
Public hearings.
Was during the finding commission meeting?
Mm-hmm.
And why do you have those if, I, as I understand, that the letters that people sent in the pros and cons, negative letters, aren't even considered?
I think they're considered the same as, as if they were at the meeting.
Right, but that's public comments, so it's not really accepted. I mean, it doesn't have to be. Unless there was something, the comment was countering the plan or something, or something like that.
It's part of the, the Planning and Zoning and Enabling Act. You have a public hearing to, to gain public comment. Um, a lot of it is, is things to bring in attention to anything that might have been missed by, um, you know, administration or the planner or engineer. Um, those are the things that you would.
Okay.
Then take a look at.
Were you, John, were you familiar with the letters that came in, the pro and negative letters?
Yeah.
Caught my attention was that the numbers, the sigil numbers on the two that favored it were wrong numbers, double oh eight rather than double oh nine.
He owns both of those.
I know he does. But I just, it's little inconsistencies like that, but always popped up in my mind at least why. So then I asked the question, I wasn't sure whether double oh nine is correct.
He, he did not, it was not part of the information that I sent to the planner.
Right.
That he doesn't get the public comment.
Okay.
Got them as part of the Planning Commission packet.
Got it.
But I mean, we, we reviewed it according to the applicant's, you know.
Right.
Application that they submitted, which identified the right piece of property.
Right.
Yes.
So, I, I do have a question. When, when you look at this map, the, the yellow area here is called Suburban Residential, one and a half acre.
Yeah.
How did, from a master zoning plan, how did we end up with that little pocket in the middle there? And because the applicant's making the claim that he's closely connected to that.
Well, uh.
And I just wondered, because that's, it's, it's not like a line down, it's just kind of an odd little pocket.
Yeah, it follows sort of a, a strange, you know, through the property lines there, and I can't really answer that. The zoning was in existence before we redid the master plan. But I guess the point I would, I would reiterate is even though that might be zoned suburban residential, the only area in there that I would say was recently developed would be Ravenswood, where they created nine lots on a road. Those, all those lots are nearly five acres in size. So it, that development isn't really consistent with the zoning of the suburban residential. You know, that allows one and a half acre lots, and like I said, it's not likely that those are gonna be divided, so.
Okay, and then my last question was, the applicant mentioned that his property was adjacent to a parcel that's two and a half acres. On the map, I don't see where that would be.
It's, it's, it's this red one right here.
Oh, okay, so it's south of it?
It's southeast of it.
It, it, it's this red one right here, and this is currently planned for, uh, you know, large lot size, and it's zoned for, uh, agricultural residential, which is a minimum of five acres. So it's, again, it's a legal non-conforming lot, it doesn't conform to its, its own zoning.
Yeah, and that's because it was there before the zoning.
Yeah.
Right, okay. Are there any other questions from the board? Mr. Burton, did you wanna close out the conversation? Oh, Mr. Ruth?
Just for, for Mr. Krickshank's benefit, um, if someone requests a duplicate tax bill or their tax history, or a plat map, I print it for them, I don't ask them why they want it. They make the request and I print it. And I think the map that you were referencing was a plat map.
You mean for the public comment, the, the wrong parcel number?
Yeah, he mentioned, he mentioned that I had printed a map.
Oh, I see.
And I just wanted to clarify that that doesn't need to go through the clerk's office, and it doesn't require a FOIA, and I'm not going to ask.
Why?
Someone why they're requesting something, especially if it's their own property, but even for another property. They, it, their, their public records, they can request them, and then I, if I print them and provide them. If I felt it was, it, uh, required a FOIA, and I think you can verify this, I always, um, have a discussion with Clerk, Clerk Winchester to see if it qualifies to go to a FOIA.
That's correct.
Okay, did you wanna wrap it up, Derek?
What do you mean by that?
Did you wanna make a motion?
Oh. I'll make a.
He's, he's the representative, he's the representative to the Planning Commission, so I figured he would.
So I will make a motion to deny the request for zoning from Ag Residential to rural estate for parcel ID zero one dash zero four dash three two six dash zero zero nine on Great Barrington Drive, Holly, Michigan, forty-four four two.
Support.
So motion by Burton, support by Clerk Winchester. Any further discussion? And.
Just for clarification, then, a yes vote is a vote for denial.
Yes.
Yes, and that's, um, coincides with the recommendation from the planner and the Planning Commission?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and can we add, um, add to the motion, um, that your motion was based on the findings of the fact in the township planner report dated May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one?
Did you want to amend, amend your motion, Mr. Burton?
Yes.
To include that?
Um, to include what was presented to the planner. Based on the findings of fact in the township planner report dated May twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Any further discussion?
And I support.
She should support again?
Yeah.
Yes.
Roll set, roll call.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
Derek Burton?
Yes.
Mark Freeman?
Yes.
Karen Winchester, yes. George Cullis?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Number five is to confirm special assessment rule for fire and emergency services, proposed resolution twenty twenty-one sixteen.
This is our annual, um, confirmation of the, uh, special assessment role, which is really the tax role. And this is a requirement, uh, that we do every year. I would move to approve, uh, the proposed resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixteen.
Support.
Just for everybody's benefit, or, I'll wait for the discussion comment.
Motion by Winchester, support by Mark Freeman. Discussion, Steve?
Just for everybody's benefit, wanted all the current mill rate, if it's changing to three point one one?
No.
Or it's the same?
This.
This isn't for the millage. This is for the confirming the, the special assessment role.
Order of rate of three point.
Unfortunately, under number two, it's, it says a millage rate of three point five.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
Oh, yeah. Yes, no, it's four.
It's, it's, it's been, it was three point eight five. For twenty twenty tax year, for the twenty twenty-one tax year, it will be four point zero zero.
Yes. Thank you, and we, we already established that.
Right, and just again for clarification, uh, the village of Holly has its own fire department. Every, all of the properties that are outside of the village of Holly are inside what is called a special assessment district. And they receive their fire and emergency services from North Oakland County Fire Authority. We have a contract with them each year, and we calculate how much tax dollars we have to collect to pay the contract. And we adjust the millage rate as needed to make sure that we collect the funds to pay the contract, to ensure that everyone has fire and emergency services.
So, one thing I have is, have we approved to move that amount up already?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we did, so.
I apologize for that.
One thing that I was, I was, uh, you know, thinking, kind of in terms of this and kind of not, but, uh, as relates to that CARES Act money that was alluded to earlier, one of the things that may be a benefit, um, going forward, I know some other municipalities have hired outside accounting firms to come in and review the amount of lost revenue that a entity has had. So if they came in, they reviewed that and said, your lost revenue was X amount, that then can get transferred straight to the general fund, taking off the restrictions because it is used for lost revenue, is one of the, you know, categories within that CARES Act. So we would hire an outside accounting firm to come in, look, evaluate, and see how much lost revenue the township has had, and from conversations with other municipalities, um, they've had very good results, in terms of getting their money.
Well, the, the problem is.
NACFA has already received money from the CARES Act.
Right.
From a previous grant request where they did exactly what you're talking about, they studied how much money had been lost, lost revenue from recovery and so forth.
Yeah.
And, remember the amount they received?
Mm-hmm.
It was quite substantial.
Yeah. Because they're a separate entity than us.
There is provision in this, um, CARES Act to award the first responders money for the fact that they worked all the way through that. And NACFA came to the, the, the employees came to the NACFA board and said, we don't want money for working, we're emergency people, and this is an emergency, and that's why we're here.
Mm-hmm.
So none of it was appropriated and, or applied for at the time that we did that last CARES Act.
So we should take that to the fire board, because this is a whole nether situation, which would reduce the contract.
Yeah.
And therefore.
That we would.
We would benefit, yeah.
And we could use those dollars for that.
Exactly.
But.
Yeah.
But that money would come out of the money we're receiving.
Yeah. So what would happen is, say they came in and said you lost, let's just say a hundred thousand dollars. That a hundred thousand dollars of that CARES Act fund, or, or that CARES Act money we're getting can be transferred right to the general fund as that is revenue that we lost.
Except that would have to be split between Rose Township, because that's an authority that we share.
No, I'm saying the money that comes to the township, so that five hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So they would come in, they would review all the financials and say, you guys approximately, you know, lost X amount of dollars. From that five seventy-nine, we could then take whatever they say we lost, and then it can be general fund dollars, freeing up the use, and then it can be used for.
Would it still be considered a loss even though they were granted money for it already?
So, the, the way, what they're looking at is, were taxes affected? Did you receive less revenue, you know, from taxes, from, I mean, there's a vast amount of things that they look at, and how the township or county or village could have lost money due to the pandemic? And that's what they, that's what they're evaluating.
So that's separate from the money that they already applied for?
This would be, okay, so, the, the revenue that comes in for this CARES Act money is five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. We would hire somebody to come in and look at our books right now and say, alright, based on all this stuff, you lost approximately a hundred thousand dollars. So that restricted five seventy-nine would then become a restricted four seventy-nine, and a hundred thousand would then be unrestricted of that CARES Act money.
And, and so the loss you're talking about is the money we collected?
Yeah.
That's the.
Correct. It, it's, has not, the loss has nothing to do with the CARES Act stuff, the loss has, as an entity as a whole. And, you know, I know after speaking to some entities that, uh, like I said, they receive very favorable amounts, in terms of lost revenue, which.
Did you see where we lost revenue in tax collection due to the pandemic?
Well, the, and they're, they're not always gonna see them, because through my direct experience, there was not a large amount of lost revenue, but the accounting firm found that there was.
Oh, okay.
So.
From, from, from a tax collection standpoint.
Yeah.
Uh, each year, the tax rule is established, and it tells us exactly how much we're going to collect for each, uh, taxing entity. Schools, uh, Oakland County, there's all various taxing agencies.
Yeah.
And I collect the taxes, and then I disperse the taxes to the entities.
Yeah.
One of those is the special assessment district for our fire and emergency. So at the end of each year, we do what is called a settlement with the county. And this settlement shows how much tax dollars we were supposed to collect, how much we actually collected, how much is now delinquent, and then we send that to the county. So I collect everything that I'm supposed to collect, according to the county, and I disperse everything that I collected. And then the only thing left would be the delinquent amount that wasn't paid. The county pays every municipality for their delinquent taxes. That allows all the municipalities to balance their budgets. That is why, when taxes become delinquent, the property owner has to pay it to the county, because the county's now in debt for paying that off, that, that delinquent amount. So I don't know how they would find any loss in tax dollars.
Well, like I said, they look at a wide array of things, and, and one of the municipalities I know very specifically, they received thirteen million, and of that six million, they said was lost, which was not, just in the form of taxes. So I'm just saying, it might be worth our while to look into having them explore that option, freeing that up.
It would, it would be interesting to hear.
Yeah.
It would be interesting to hear from that community that lost, where they felt the loss was. Cause as Mark said, it doesn't seem.
It's not in taxes, because I've been tra, you know, I've been treasured for, uh, twelve years, and I do a settlement every year.
Yeah, well, like I said, I mean, they.
Every year, I, every year I collect everything it says I'm supposed to collect, and I disperse everything I'm supposed to disperse. And at the end, you're balanced back to zero.
Well, a lot of places has DPWs, and there's, there's a lot of things.
Yeah, there's.
He's not saying lost money from the department, he's saying lost money from the municipality.
That we maybe expensed things that we are not considering.
And that, like I said, they look at a wide array of things, and I can promise you the municipality taxed everything they were supposed to and got everything they were supposed to. So I think it might be worth our while to look into that.
Okay.
And the only reason I bring that up now is because, I apologize, I was under the impression that we were voting on that millage rate today, but.
Well, that was supposed to be correct there.
We did that two meetings ago, I think.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, well, it'll be interesting. Can you find out?
I can find out tomorrow.
Who the firm was, or what kind of firm?
It was Maynard Cost Harrison, out of Lansing, Michigan.
Maynard?
Yeah, I, I can give you the information, yeah.
Alright, it'll be interesting to at least have.
How does that differ from, um, our audit?
Because they probably look for different things. They're there as a benefit to those who are hiring them, to find what it is.
Maybe it would be advantageous for you to have a conversation with them, have them explain what they look at.
I would prior to wanting to, to just vote on spending money to pay them.
Yeah.
Then they come back and say, well, you, you guys are so small, we didn't hardly find anything.
Right.
Well, that's what I said, I mean, when I heard time wrapped.
Yeah, we've already gotten.
What they would look at, because.
A hundred and.
I am sure they gotta take that in consideration, how many you've, how much you've already received
Right.
because of losses associated with the pandemic.
Right. The ones that we identified have been covered.
Correct.
Well, not, they only, they capped us out, so.
Yeah, alright, well.
And, I mean, they could be looking at depreciation, I mean, several factors.
If, if you get that information and can forward it, that'd be good.
Yep, yep.
Is there, is there any other discussion, we do have a motion on the floor? Uh, roll call?
Who made a motion to approve this?
I did, and you supported.
Okay, just, just wanted to be clear.
It was ten minutes of conversation ago.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, no more discussion?
I, I would say as corrected.
Well, you already amended it.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
So roll call?
We're, we're, you're ready to go?
Okay. Um, Karen Winchester, yes. Mark Freeman?
Yes.
Derek Burton?
Yes.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
George Cullis?
Yes, I'm sorry, Steve. Okay, motion passes five zero. Last is the Eagle test results. I, I put those in front of you, I put it on the agenda so that we would, uh, look at it publicly. Well, where'd they go? Those are the results that came back from Eagle, Mary Blanchard already touched base on it. It also, um, covers the fact that the, she brought up the part about the fish, and if you look at that, uh, communication, the, uh, it tells you that the fish results won't be in until the fall. I did forward that to our attorney, um, Chuck Barbie-Erie, and he sent back a communication, uh, that he had reviewed the PFAS constituent data for surface water samples from the two lakes, and I find nothing remarkable or elevated in the results. The few detections do not suggest a risk, nor do they appear to suggest, at this point, a connection with the landfill. Uh, let me know if you have any more questions. And then, like I said, in the communicate from Eagle, it does tell you that the, um, fish results won't be in until the fall. So I say that because I just wanted, um, to make sure that the residents know we're watching this and we're monitoring this as the results come in, and, um, we're looking at. I didn't know if anybody from the board would have any more questions?
My question is, have any, have any results come back yet for the homeowners' wells?
I can tell you the name of the test, yes.
Okay.
Uh, Eagle was the coastal testing, almost immediately after the community board's community meeting. And they still have not gotten all of the permissions from the homeowners. And now they're looking at the fact that the contractors for, uh, emperors, uh, will probably test in progress.
I, yeah, I just think that wells are more important than surface water.
Mary, if I'm not mistaken, they did test some homes, just not all of them, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
And some of those were repeats of the citizen testing that we did. And so the three that were supposed to have done immediately surrounding the home that tested positive for six per pound for two thousand, and one at double amount. Those are the two homes that have not been tested yet.
And and you said those three homes, they're they're waiting to get permission?
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
Although two of them already have been commissioned, just one, and they were supposed to have tested in two, and they were going to test the church, so that's why I'm not sure why they did not test on July 11th, I just told them they were going.
Any other board comments? Then we will move on to public comment. This is Ms. Brinker. You can come up and tell us about the programming and so forth.
The Johns.
Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, I thought I saw you leave.
Oh, I just got off or something.
Oh. Yeah, we're set if you can, if if you want to leave.
You guys want to?
Thank you for your, your time. That was funny when you, she said, do you want to let, she said, do you want to let the Johns leave? And I, I started to say, well, Mr. Ballant already left, and then he was sitting there.
All right, thank you.
I saw you leave, I didn't see you come back in.
Thank you. All right, shall I talk now?
Yep.
All right. Tony Brinker, Parks Director for Holly Township, just wanted to let you guys know that we have a bunch of stuff coming up. Tomorrow, the beach is our Summer Olympics. We don't have to worry about the whole COVID testing of our athletes. So I expect it'll be a lot of fun. We have fun events such as our javelin throw, which is noodles, and all kinds of fun stuff like that happening for the kids. Next, Monday and Wednesday, the twenty sixth and twenty eighth, we're having secret agent camp out at Sorensen Park, will, which will include, I don't know if I should tell you guys this, but axe throwing. So the county brings out, the county brings out a thing, it's all safe and stuff, and yeah, I assume it's not real, but, you know. Tomorrow, we will have fencing as part of our, our Olympics, so, once again, nerf fencing.
Nerf fencing?
Nerf fencing, yes.
Nerf axes.
So, August seventh, we're having a day for people to come out and work on the eighteen hole disc golf course to help get it ready. It's going to start at eight AM and run probably till three or four in the afternoon. The guys that do that, they're very, very dedicated. They showed up in the pouring rain and thunderstorms, to use a tool that I had spent all day using in the pouring rain and thunderstorms as well, so, so people could want to show up to help, that would be greatly appreciated. We're going to have a nature hike on Saturday, August twenty first. That should be a lot of fun. Oakland County Naturalist is coming out to lead the hike through the park, and it's going to, that one, they're going to be dealing with animals in Michigan. And then, on September eleventh, as part of the Holly Days thing, we are doing a disc golf tournament fundraiser, hoping to raise about five, six thousand dollars to pay for the baskets that we need for our eighteen hole disc golf course. Nice, luckily for us, Kensington Parks, in order to stay on the pro disc golf tournament or tournaments, amazing, I never thought I'd find myself saying there's a pro disc golf, but there is. They had to get rid of their rubber mats for their tee pads and put in concrete, and so they donated donated their eighteen holes of those to our park.
Nice.
Because someone had helped them fund it and stuff, so lots of cool things coming up in the township parks. So pass the word. And is this broadcast?
Yes.
Yes.
Is it being broadcast right now?
Yes.
Okay, where's it being broadcast at?
YouTube.
Really? Because I searched and couldn't find it, so that's why I'm asking.
I actually just shared it. I was trying to see what video, but yeah, I'm watching it right now on my phone.
Okay. Cool. All right, thank you.
So I did want to mention, you talked about Kensington having the pro thing. I was in Holdings Par Easter, which is right across from the entrance across there from the Dairy Queen. They have this long aisle of discs, and I counted them. There are, they're different ounces, they're different design. They had a hundred and eighty different discs that you can buy. It's more, it's.
That's small, that's small fish, man. I went in a store that must have over a million dollars worth involved. We're trying to get into the, so we'll be able to sell some, unfortunately, due to the pandemic. The company that produces them can't do it yet.
It might be small fish, but like you said, I was like, this is really a thing to the point of a hundred, and there were weights and ounces, and how it's tipped this way and tipped that way.
They curved this way, they curved that way. There's short ones, there's putters, there's, I love it, because the disc golf guys come in, and every time they see me, they bring me a new disc, so I'm not hopefully going to have to spend a lot of money to get in this sport, but, you know, anyways.
And and don't forget, isn't the fire people coming for the fire hose or something down at the beach? Yeah, see? You got a four-year-old, I'm on top of your stuff there.
It's written down here, but I missed it. Beat the Heat is going to end our Summer Olympics with the village fire department will show up and spray down the kids. I'm going to warn you for your four-year-old, be ready when they turn it up to get him out of there, because it hurts if they turn it up too far.
Mr. Kinnaman?
Richard Kinnaman, four one five one, Stonebridge. I am here as the Director for the Chamber of Commerce, just to update you on a couple of events that we have happening over the next several weeks. We have a great golf outing that is happening in two days. Sorry you missed the opportunity, plan for next year. Next weekend, starting Friday, we have our Chamber Breakfast. We are hosting HIA, and the students that they have recognized this year and honored them, we will be honoring them as well. And then next weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, is sidewalk sales and community-wide garage sales, rimming sales. So whatever area you live in, you can actually sign up if you are doing a sale, register on our, our website so that people can go and see that. It's not like a registration, you have to do something, it's just listing your address. And people can also visit that and visit holly.com and find that link there in order to know where some of those sales are at, visit the businesses downtown. And then the following weekend, on Saturday, August seventh, we have been able to get approval to do Blues Brews and barbecue, and if that turns out anything like I have seen other events that got canceled in the last year, this will be a very, very well-attended good event. So tickets are available for that as well.
All right, thank you. Just to add to what Mr. Kinnaman said, the golf outing for the Chamber this Friday is a fundraiser for the scholarship fund, and, no, I just wanted to add that to that. Ms. Blanchard, and then we'll go to Jenna.
Mary Blanchard, three four four four, Old Creek Drive, Holly, Michigan. I just wanted to let the community know that on Tuesday, August third, Holly, Michigan Water Concerns will be hosting a meeting to discuss the current standing of issues related to the village of Holly contaminated Falk Road dump, the ongoing expansion of the Holly Hills manufactured housing community in the Shaiwasi River. During this meeting, it will be discussed whether we will form our own citizen advisory group. In forming a citizen advisory group, it may help us, and the agency staffers will be named to work with us. Other areas of the state, such as Escoda and Rockford, have found it helpful. Please watch Facebook for any updates as to the location of the meeting. For the Holly Heritage Farmstead Community and Food Bank Gardens, the.